She started with the like, oh, I said, just put the call was done. They have to move over. They've done all the check week and strategic locations are controlled by the town. So we need to.
Well, it hasn't started yet. I don't know why.
Hey, Tony. Hey, Tony.
Hi.
Is there something going on with the cell phone tower?
Not that I know of.
Someone just asked me about that. I hadn't heard or seen anything, so. Let's check and see if you got.
There has been. Uh, seems like lately those the service in town, like just in the last two weeks has gone really bad.
Oh, yeah.
Um. So they they might be asking in hopes that something is going on.
See, I'll see. Was something going on with new cell tower? Um, that's all I know.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah.
So, hey, Josh.
Hey, Mark, how are you?
Good. You're back in the Oval Office.
Yeah. Yeah, you up in, um. Northland?
Lubbock, Maine.
Yeah, wow.
Up there.
Yeah, it's pretty close to the border, right?
It's on the border. It's the easternmost town in the United States.
Wow. Thinking about making a break over the border?
No, I can't get over there. You have to have a COVID test and a bunch of crap, so.
Yeah.
So.
We have a customer that's based in Montreal and they're, you know, they're wanting to come down to visit, but they can't get permission. Uh huh.
Tony, what's the occasion?
We had Congressman Moulton came to town today, so, you know, I had to look good for him.
It did represent well.
Um, I'm just trying to, it looks like, I don't know if Pedro's logged in as the town hall. There's two town halls here and I don't have like the host privilege, so I just need to figure. Uh, so I can handle like the muting and sharing screen and stuff, so just bear with me for a sec.
I don't think so. Doesn't work, I think.
Nope, not muted. Thank you. All right. All right, well, it's six oh one on August 18th, 2021, and shall open the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health meeting. Um. Do we need to open the planning board meeting simultaneously or wait until that's, um? Do we get that agenda item?
Um.
Tony, we can wait on that. I mean, the agenda item isn't up for a little bit now. We have time.
Yeah, all right. I just wanted to mention that Gene Canty had a conflict he expects to join about quarter past or twenty past six, so uh, we do have a quorum with Slough and Colin and I on the phone on Zoom, so, um, we shall get started. The coronavirus update with John Kulan or Deb Murphy is the first item on the agenda. Um, Sean or Deb, do you have anything to share with us?
I don't think Deb's gonna be joining us, so I will take her spot, but John, if you wanna start.
Sure, um, I was listening to the governor on Boston Public Radio earlier today and he made it very clear that he's in favor of leaving decisions up to the local officials, the cities and towns across the Commonwealth. It looks like we are in in, uh, in the direction of having booster shots being made available to us. So we have a good, robust system in place already for dispensing those and I'm in communication with my colleagues on the North Shore. And we are looking to support each other. And we are looking to support each other in getting booster shots out within our communities as well as regional efforts as we did with the, uh, the original vaccines. I've also continued communicating with people in the community who are asking questions that are relative to their individual business, businesses and activities as well as what people are considering for activities in the upcoming fall and winter seasons. And certainly the, um, the instruction to them is, uh, this is where we are now and, uh, pay attention, keep in touch. Because whatever I or the, uh, or, or any board says today certainly could change. We're in pretty good position with our numbers, however, as we've seen over the past year and a half, that can change at any time without notice. Tony?
Well, thank you, John. Um, so I, I met with, um, Deb last week as a number of our neighboring communities are coming out with, um, indoor mask wearing policies. Some communities are requiring masks in public buildings. Some communities are requiring them only if you are unvaccinated. Some, uh, communities are requiring masks indoor regardless of vaccination and not just public buildings, but any indoor space. Um, so you know, we met to discuss, you know, the town in the hots, data on active cases and vaccine rates and look at what the, you know, the data we're getting from DPH or the, um, CDC about, you know, the danger, uh, areas and you know, we talked a lot about the Delta variant. The town in the hot, uh, when we met on the twelfth, the last, uh, the two-week picture, uh, prior to that, there was eleven active cases in the hot. Our vaccine rates are extremely high. Uh, we're doing an incredible job. We're at seventy-eight percent fully vaccinated. Oh, if you break that down into the different age groups, you know, especially fifteen to, uh, nineteen, we're almost at ninety, you know, above ninety percent. Uh, so we're doing a really, really good job, but of course, anybody, any, uh, anyone under the age of twelve is ineligible. And we have, so that's about a hundred percent of the Johnson School, uh, students are ineligible and unvaccinated. Um, and the other data that we gather from the state and the federal government is that folks who are vulnerable to, vulnerable to a, or they have a weakened immune system, um, that they are susceptible to, um, getting sick easily regardless of whether they're vaccinated or not, are, uh, part of that risky population. Uh, so our policy that we've created is really targeting, um, risky environments and risky population. We've decided not to require masks, uh, indoor. However, we do, uh, we are requiring it in the Johnson School and we are requiring it in all Council on Aging, uh, spaces and programs or the bus. Um, so whether you're, you know, even just visiting in there, you have to put a mask on. Uh, whether you're coming into the Town Hall or other public spaces, we're not requiring a mask, but we are strongly encouraging it if you are unvaccinated. If you are vaccinated and are susceptible, have a, have a weak immune system. Or if you live with anyone that falls under either of those categories. The data really points to the fact that if you are unvaccinated, or let me put it this way, vaccinated folks have a, have an eight percent or I'm sorry, eighty percent, uh, higher, better chance of having small or less symptoms if they were to catch the virus again. They have a ninety-five percent chance of, of not having to be hospitalized. So while the vaccine, um, you know, I know that there's common talk out there about, you know, I got vaccinated, you have people who are vaccinated are still getting sick. Uh, we do have cases like that, however, those cases are less, you know, if they don't, if they're not, um, have a weak immune system, they are less likely to get significantly sick or intense symptoms and they're significantly less likely to end up in the hospital. Uh, so the vaccine, while it's not bulletproof, there is no vaccine or policy that is going to guarantee that you don't contract COVID nineteen. But the vaccine mu- uh, significantly, significantly improves your chances of either not testing positive or having, um, no symptoms or symptoms that don't require you to go into the hospital. Our younger, our younger population that's unvaccinated because they're ineligible. If you have, um, if you're interacting with that population at home, if you babysit kids that are under twelve years old, even if you're vaccinated, you should act as if you are not. If you are going into a crowded space, if you are indoors, you should be wearing a mask because you can transfer that to them. And what the other data that we're seeing is that pediatrics and, um, hospitals, especially for the youth, are extreme, are surging at the moment. Not all of that is COVID. RSV is a common, um, virus, uh, what's the terminology, John? A, uh, airborne virus that happens in the wintertime, uh, typically in December, and for some reason the numbers are extremely high right now. So Children's Hospital, pediatrics are surging and so you have to think as if you are unvaccinated if you have children that are unvaccinated at home or if you babysit children that are unvaccinated. And, and so uh, our policy, like I said, back to, you know, what our policy is, is really encouraging the use of masks in public buildings if you fall into that population, but it's not required. I also want to make a point that our neighboring communities do not, are not experiencing the numbers that we are. Uh, they have much higher numbers of positive cases at the moment. Lynn is, uh, that same two-week period that I talked about earlier, Lynn had a hundred and ninety-seven positive cases. Marblehead had forty-two. Swan Scott had eighteen. Revere had a hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, so when you are traveling outside of Nahat and going to the grocery store or go shopping or, you know, entering those public spaces, you want to be wearing a mask. Um, it's best for you, it's best for your children, um, because those other communities are seeing increased numbers, uh, positive cases. Uh, the other, the good news on the other side was that the testing numbers are really high. Uh, so like for Lynn, they had almost six thousand people tested, um, in that two-week period and only two hundred tested positive. So there's a lot of people still getting tested and a lot of people that are not testing positive, which is good. But again, the Delta variant, um, the information we're getting about the Delta variant is that it is six times more contagious than Corona, the original coronavirus. Um, and it has, and it has significantly higher symptoms or more intense symptoms. Um, so wear a mask, I encourage it and, uh, but, you know, like I said, it's, it's not required in our public buildings at the moment. Um, and then the other piece was if, uh, as John mentioned, uh, booster shots are being recommended for, um, those that have, um, weakened immune systems, uh, the vaccine, um, I don't know if, John, do you know if the Lynn, uh, clinics are offering that booster shot?
Not at this time.
So if, if people are looking for more information about, um, if they think that they should be getting a booster shot, do you know where we can send them for that answer?
The protocols are still being drawn up and when the booster shots are available, it should be, uh, it within a month by, by mid-September. And, uh, from now until then, we expect the protocols to be firmed up and, uh, I hope by our next, uh, meeting, uh, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health meeting, we should have some definitive answers for that question.
All right, um, there's, testing is still available at the Beacon site on the Linway. Just go on to, uh, just, you know, search online for Linway Beacon, Project Beacon, and you can get an appointment through that. The link, the link is still on our website as well. All right, so that's, that's my COVID update.
All right, thanks for that, um, John and Tony. Next is, uh, opening comments. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers is the last Saturday of each month from eight AM to twelve PM behind the DPW. Fees may apply. Checks only. No cash. Visit nahat.org for information. Accept the materials. Compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. Twenty twenty-one resident stickers required. Visit nahat.org for acceptable materials. Leaves or other yard waste must be in biodegradable bags or no bags. No plastic bags will be accepted. There is a swim organized annual autumn beach cleanup uh, on Sunday, September twelfth, from eleven AM to two PM. Volunteers will meet at the Lowlands parking lot to sign in, pick up gloves and bags and then head over to Short Beach and Doggy Beach and perhaps other beaches to begin cleanups. Um, Town Hall will be closed on Monday, September sixth and observance of Labor Day. Um, I believe our next meeting will be September eighth, following Wednesday. Um, and we have some library updates. I see Sharon's on the line. Sharon, would you be able to, um, share your updates about the library?
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thanks so much. Um, yes, we'll also be doing our part to keep people safe. We have returned to having all staff wear a mask when they're indoors working with the public. We also recommend that all adults and children over the age of two be masked when in the building. Outdoors, everyone may unmask, but we recommend maintaining a physical distance. The library will return to its pre-COVID schedule and will add an additional hour to Thursday evening, so the schedule will be Tuesdays, ten to seven, Wednesdays, ten to five, Thursdays, ten to eight, Fridays, ten to five, and Saturdays, twelve to four. This schedule will begin on Tuesday, September seventh. The children's room is offering a new kid craft project each week, so stop by with your little ones. Storytime with Miss Laura will be held this fall each Tuesday at ten o'clock and each Saturday at noon. Let's see, and that'll begin on September seventh as well, it's a Tuesday. These will be outdoors at the library playground in good weather and indoors if not. And there will be a new story stroll at the playground on September first, so be on the lookout for a new story. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners has awarded the library a federal LSTA grant to better describe its historical artwork and native artifacts collections. By summer of twenty twenty-two, we should have a self-tour brochure, signs describing the artworks and some programs about the first inhabitants of Nahat, the Massachusetts tribe. We will also have these works photographed and uploaded to Digital Commonwealth just like we did with the Press Plants and the Mass Memories Roadshow. The book sale is still with us. Afraid you missed the Friends Book Sale? There are still lots of books left, so stop by the library for great books at bargain prices. And thank you to everyone who helped purchase a total of over two thousand dollars worth of books this year. People are still picking up books. We had our best book sale ever, um, in the five-plus years that I've been here. And there are still a lot of books because everybody donated during COVID. So please come join us. That's my report. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sharon. Lot of, um, exciting, interesting things on the horizon, so thanks for that summary. Um, I see Gene Canty has joined us now, so we have a full, um, select board, uh, present. And, uh, since we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board tonight and to not keep everyone waiting, that, with that item's appearing further down the agenda, um, let's move that agenda item up. So I guess the Planning Board needs to open their meeting and then we can, um, have that discussion and, uh, so does, uh, someone from the Planning Board want to open their meeting?
Yeah, Dan Berman is on the line.
I'm, I'm on the line. Um, I'm not sure how many people are here, but we'll take attendance and we'll find out. Uh, we will, uh, call the roll to see who is here to open our, uh, joint meeting with the Planning Board. Uh, Cal.
Here.
Sheila. Pat.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Shannon.
Here.
Steve. And I am here. There are five of us. Uh, Sheila and Steve are absent. We are opening our meeting at six twenty PM.
The purpose of this agenda item is to, uh, appoint two alternate members to the Planning Board. Those, those seats have been sitting empty, correct, Dan?
Uh, these are alternate seats, yes. They, we have, uh, we have not appointed anyone in the past. The time has come to make the appointment that we are supposed, appointments, uh, that we are supposed to make.
Hey Dan, it's Shane. Uh, can you give a brief explanation of how alternates work?
Uh, yes, um, uh, the purpose of having alternates is that when we have a, when we're considering a, a special permit, particularly with a special permit with Site Plan Review, a major project that can drag on for a while, we are authorized to act at the conclusion of our, uh, several part hearings, uh, only with, uh, the, the participation, the voting of those members who are present for the whole time. Uh, and as we experienced two years ago, sometimes it goes on so long that we may lose a member here or there along the way. Uh, and we may find ourselves ready to, uh, deliberate and vote and we no longer have a quorum of members who participated through the entire process. So with two alternate members, um, if they are active, uh, participating the whole time in the hearing, uh, uh, the chairman can designate one or two of the alternate members, uh, to deliberate and vote as members of the Planning Board. Um, if we, uh, if we don't have, um, uh, if we lose the participation of one or two along the way.
Thank you.
So I will, um, try to briefly describe kind of the process we're about to go through here. Uh, the zoning, um, the section, let's see here. The zoning, yeah, I'm just trying to cite it.
It's the end of section nine oh nine. I'm not sure which subsection it is.
All right, nine oh nine. I believe it's nine, actually it's nine oh eight subsection I, I believe. It says here, it says here that the Board of Selectmen and the members of the Planning Board shall appoint two alternate members of the Planning Board, each of who shall be a registered voter in the town to serve for two-year terms so that the term on one alternate member expires on June thirtieth of each year. The appointment shall be made in the same manner as provided by law for filling vacancies on the Planning Board. So the manner by which we typically fill vacancies for the Planning So the manner by which we typically fill vacancies for the planning board is a which is dictated by the charter is that the it's a joint vote between the Board of Selectmen and the other members of the planning board. Um the way that we have done this in the past is the uh board looking to appoint new members will first vote to nominate anyone that has expressed interest to put them up, uh put them on the ballot, so to speak, and then uh there'll be a joint vote of the planning board going first and the and the Board of Selectmen following. Uh given that we have two seats here and um the way that the intent of the zoning is that they are for two-year terms, but they expire every other year. So one seat for this for the purposes of this appointment, one of these is going to be for a two-year term, and the other is going to be for a one-year term, is that is that correct, Dan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we uh posted the um these positions being available and asked anyone that was interested to submit a letter of interest in their resume by um a certain date. We had three candidates submit um in no particular order, their names are Kristen Standish, Michael Coller, and John uh Stable or St-.
Stabile.
Stabile. Thank you, so what I would like to do here is have the planning board um first have the planning board nominate these three candidates for we'll do the two-year term seat first, um nominate these three candidates for the for the two-year term seat. And then once that vote, once you um that vote's taken place, we'll do the joint vote with the planning board going first and individually um voting for one of the three candidates to take uh that seat. And then the other remaining two will be nominated for the one-year seat by the planning board and then a joint vote for that. Does that sound sound good, any questions?
Yes, uh to for purposes of clarification, John Stabile and I are related. So does that mean that I have to abstain or can I vote?
Um I I think, Jean, it might be better off if you abstain if it's a relative of yours, would be cleaner that way.
Okay, great.
It's not, it's it's not a close relative, Dan, do you do you want to hear how close it is or do we just uh just best if Jean abstains?
I I think, I'm sure, Jean, say what you got to say, but I think at the end of the day, it might be better just to make as clean as possible, but describe the relationship, if you don't mind.
Uh I I brought half brothers.
Oh, you're oh, you're half brothers, okay, I thought it was farther, I thought it was more distant.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, to make it safe, we should just abstain from any vote involving Mr. Stabile.
And I agree to. Just to clarify, the two-year term means uh that person, if they chose to run for election, would be on the ballot in April of twenty twenty-three, and the one-year term, they'd be on the ballot of April of twenty twenty-two, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Um.
Okay.
Honestly, I I don't know. The way that the that I will have to follow up on that question, Mr. Chairman, because it doesn't say that these alternate um members are elected. It says that they're appointed by the planning board and the selectmen, so I don't know if we if if it's a process that we have to go through this process every year. Um let I'll I'll ask Dan to take a closer look at that and and get back to you.
I'll do that now while you guys are going through that.
Yeah, it may, it may actually be um this process in June, expiring June thirty rather than facing the voters, I I think I think that's right on on second thought.
Thank you, right, Dan.
Uh so I'm sorry, so the members of the planning board that are present to vote are Dan Berman, Cal, Hastings, uh Shane Bianchi, Pat O'Reilly, and who else?
Rob Steinberg.
Okay, got it.
Uh and uh just we can just ask if if either Sheila or um Shannon has joined us, or Steve rather, Shannon's here. If either Shannon or Steve has had the opportunity to join us in the meantime? No.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, uh it is, uh the terms expire June thirtieth, and this is the process that we go through every year.
Okay, so um.
I agree. I agree, it's not a it's not an elected position, we we discussed how it's a mixed board, where it's somewhere elected and somewhere appointed, which seemed weird to us, but that's what the statute and bylaw reads.
Okay, it's only it's only the alternates who are uh who are not elected.
Exactly.
And those who feel vacancies, right? Okay, so shall we nominate, shall we do that now, the nominations?
Yeah, I think of I think a motion to nominate Kristen Standish, Michael Coller, and John Stabile for the two-year alternate seat um is in order.
Okay, uh is there someone who wants to make that motion?
Oh moved.
That was Cal?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
That was.
Pat, yep.
That was Pat, okay, uh let us vote uh to nominate the three, all three uh for the two-year seat. Cal.
Yes.
Okay, uh Sheila, if she's here. Pat.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Steve, if he's here. And I vote yes. I think that motion has passed five, five to zero with two absent.
Okay, so um now uh what we will do is have a joint vote. So imagine that you have a ballot in front of you, and there's three names to choose from. Dan, what I'd like you to do is call out uh the members of your board first, and the members of your board should name one of the three nominees uh as their vote for the two-year seat.
Okay.
Do we need a do we need a motion to vote or just go straight to the voting?
I don't think.
No, I don't, no, I don't think we need much.
All right.
Okay, we are voting on the for the two-year seat, uh there are three, all three candidates are are in this vote. Cal.
Uh Kristen.
Sheila is uh absent, I think, Pat.
Uh John Stabile.
Rob.
Unstabile.
Shannon.
Mr. Stabile.
Steve is not here. Okay, uh I'll uh I'll vote for Kristen.
Okay, uh Josh and Mark, uh Jean, you're going to abstain.
Josh Antrim, John Stabile.
My color and John Stabile.
Okay. Congratulations, uh Mr. Stabile, that you have won this two-year seat. Uh it's a one, two, three, four, five votes for John Stabile and two for uh Kristen Standish. Okay, uh next, uh we're going to go to the one-year seat, so um Dan, if you could move to nominate Kristen and Michael for the one-year seat and uh have someone second that and vote on it.
Well, I'll let uh somebody else uh can uh make the motion to nominate Kristen Standish and Michael Coller uh for the one-year seat as a um as an alternate member, somebody want to move that?
Oh, move.
Okay.
That was uh Cal moving, uh was that Chris, was that Shannon also, you're welcome to second?
I will second.
Okay, uh let us vote for that for the for the nominations, um Cal.
Kristen.
Uh no, we're voting for, we're voting to nominate Kristen and Michael. I'll vote to fill the seat in a moment.
Yes.
Okay, Sheila. Pat.
Yeah.
Rob.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Steve. And I vote yes. So again, five uh five in favor, none opposed, two absent.
Okay, so we are going to move on to the vote again, imagine you have a ballot in front of you with two names to choose from, Kristen Standish and Michael Coller, and this is for the one-year seat. Uh planning board, I'll have you go first and then followed by the um followed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Cal.
Kristen.
Sheila. Pat.
Kristen, Kristen Standish.
Rob.
Kristen Standish.
Shannon.
Who's the caller?
Steve. And I'll vote for Kristen.
Okay, um Jean, I don't think you need to abstain from this one, so we'll go um Josh, Mark, and Jean.
Josh Antrim, Kristen Standish.
My color and Christian Standish.
Jean Canty, Christian Standish.
Okay. Um congratulation, Kristen, um this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven votes in favor of Kristen, uh one vote in favor of Michael, uh congratulations, Kristen, for your one-year seat. Uh Michael, thank you very much for.
Tony, Tony, before we go forward, I I'm redoing the numbers for the first vote, if I have it correct, we have a ten-member board essentially, or it's where we're dealing with a joint board, and there's only five votes in favor, it's got to be a majority vote, so.
A majority of those who are elected or a majority of those who are present and voting?
No, no, you you just because the people aren't present does not reduce your quorum, you still have to have a majority of the members. So we have um, I think we just take the vote again and get a majority, and that'll be the end of it.
Well, do we um if we have the vote and we don't have a majority, do we then drop the lowest candidate and vote with only the remaining two?
I I don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully challenge you on that, Dan.
Okay.
Uh so that was a question.
Uh I agree.
Oh, Dan's script, I was I'm challenging, I'm respectfully challenging Dan's script.
Okay, what do you got?
Um the way that the charter is read is that it's a, it's like a, it's set up like we have in the past, is that it's like a ballot vote. Let me just pull up the language.
I believe you're right, Tony, I believe it's the majority of the members present.
Yeah. Any vacancy of an elective office, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen, shall be filled by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Office Board or Committee. Appointment shall be effective only until the next election of the town, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by ballot, that's irrelevant here. In the event of a vacancy or vacancies in the Board of Selectmen, that's relevant here, so it says, any vacancy of an elective office, which um even though this is not uh the zoning law says to treat it as if it is, shall be filled by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Office Board or Committee.
Okay.
So it's not just those present, still got to be the entire, the majority.
All right, so so we've had one ballot, we did not exactly arrive at a majority, uh do we now take a second ballot, including or not including the uh candidate who did not receive votes?
I think you vote again with the same candidates, hoping we get a majority this time, and and by logic, you think you would easily easily get a majority.
Yeah.
You have, I would say Kristen Standish is now been voted by a majority to to fill the one-year seat. That that's been accomplished.
Yeah.
Uh I'm not sure if that, I think if if we elect John Stabile to the two-year seat, I think we can uh stick with the vote that we took to elect Kristen to the one-year seat, but uh if there's a different result for the two-year seat, I think we would have to uh revote the one-year seat.
Okay, so um so we're going to go back to the two-year seat, do you want the us to go through the whole nomination process again?
No, no.
No, okay, so we'll just, we'll just.
We just have another vote, another ballot.
So you have all three candidates available to you, Kristen Standis, Michael Coller, John Stabile. Uh planning board, do you want to go first?
Sure, um Cal.
Uh Kristen.
Pat.
Uh John Stabile.
Rob.
Stabile.
Shannon.
Stabile.
And I will vote for John Stabile.
Okay, um Josh and Mark.
Josh Antrim, John Stabile.
Someone in John Stabile.
Okay, good, that's on my job, great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Gets very, gets very confusing, no doubt about it.
You may have won this battle, Dan.
Oh, there'll be many more, my friend.
So the election of uh Kristen Standish to the one-year seat stands.
Yes.
Good.
So congratulations, Kristen and John and Michael, thank you for uh putting in your interest and stick around. Uh your time will come, uh thank you all for being part part of the vote. Um if you want to close your part portion of the meeting, Dan, that's your word.
Yes, okay, let me uh let me add my congratulations to John and to Kristen for your seats and and my thanks to uh Michael for uh stepping forward to be a candidate, um now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh moved.
That was Cal, is there a second?
Uh second by Rob.
Second by Rob, uh okay, vote to adjourn, Cal.
Yes.
Sheila here? Pat.
Yeah.
Rob. Is that, was that a yes, Rob?
It was, yes.
Okay, Shannon?
Yes.
Steve. And I vote yes, we are adjourned, uh time is six forty-two, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can go back to um our original sequence on the um on the agenda, moving on to new business, uh first item there is a vote to reorganize the Board of Selectmen.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Joshua Antrim back to chairman of the Board of Selectmen and Eugene Canty as vice chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Um I guess I can second that. Any discussion on that? Thanks for keeping the seat warm, Jean. Uh roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
My color and I.
Josh Antrim, I. Uh we have some meeting minutes to approve, but I have some motions there.
You can motion, I, Dan and I spoke about this, Mr. Chairman, uh you you can motion these as one as one vote. You can move to approve all three, okay?
Okay, so let's see, uh but what are the dates, Tony?
Do I, um I moved at the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from April sixth, twenty twenty-one, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing, hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
My color and I.
Josh Antrim, I. Uh and we have um an appointment of Robert Beretta to captain the not fire department.
I move that the Mahont Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Robert Beretta as captain of the Mahont Fire Department. of Robert Beretta as captain of the Nahat Fire Department effective August twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Um,
Tony?
Great news for Rob. Uh, Tony, you have any words to add?
Uh, Rob's, Rob, it's well deserved. Rob's been with the department for quite some time now. Uh, this is a civil service position. He, um, applied and took the test and passed and was eligible to become the captain position. It became available when, um, Austin Antrim, uh, became our new chief. And so we had a vacancy in the captain's position and, um, we needed to fill that as quickly as possible so that we had another ranking, um, officer in the department. So that's why this is kind of a retroactive approval. Um, but, um, uh, firefighter Beretta, or Captain Beretta now, um, is a great asset to the town, so thank you for your consideration on this.
Yeah, congratulations to Rob. That's great news.
Congratulations, Rob. Yep, he's been there for a while and he's been through all that, so, um, glad he, um, he stepped up great.
Likewise, Rob. Congratulations.
All right, um, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye.
Hey, um, I move to, I, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Nicholas Campabasso as a reserve officer on the Nahat Police Department effective August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? I think this is a position that became available with the retirement of Michael Dwyer, is that right, Tony?
Uh, two, we had, um, Michael Dwyer, uh, and, uh, we elevated, um, uh, a reserve officer to a full-time position, so, uh, we have a few positions available that we're looking to fill. Uh, Chief Furlong is on the line as well. Chief, do you have, um, anything you wanna say, uh, regarding Nick? Chief?
Well, um, I'll fill the, there, um, looks like he had, um, he's had his training and, um, has a degree in criminal justice from Norwich University. Um, so I think we're lucky to have him on board, so I don't know if Tim is unmuted, has, has anything to add? Guess not, so, uh, but, uh, congratulations to Nicholas Campabasso as a new reserve officer in the hot, uh, assuming we pass this vote. So, uh, any other comments, any other discussion?
Um, I know that, I know that, uh, you know, this has been in the works for quite some time, even, um, under Chief Dwyer. Uh, so highly recommended, uh, by both former Chief Dwyer and now Chief Furlong, so, um, great, uh, opportunity for the town and we're happy to have, uh, Officer Campabasso join our team.
Okay.
Welcome. It's the camp of, so.
What's that?
I said, welcome aboard Officer Campabasso.
Yes, uh, so roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Okay.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Carl Macario as a school crossing guy effective August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Um, I think, uh, Carl has been, uh, doing this on a substitute basis over the past school year, right, Tony?
Yes.
And, uh, has, uh, offered to continue that in a full-time capacity, so that's great news.
Exactly.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Cal for doing this, you know, and Cal does a lot of other things for the town. Um, he's been, uh, very supportive at, as in emergency management. He's doing his stints down the wharf. Um, I know during COVID, he was over Lyn Tech almost daily, uh, helping out over there. So I really appreciate all the, um, you know, I really appreciate Cal's dedication to the town and everything he's done over the past year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Thanks, Carl.
Hey, uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Kelly Cook as the assistant accountant effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Um, any discussion? I see that Kelly Cook, um, worked with Allison uh, at Marblehead, it looks like, so, um, it's nice that they're familiar with one another and assume she comes highly recommended by Allison in this role as her assistant.
Yes, we had, um, a number of candidates apply and we interviewed, um, probably four or five of them. And there was, it was a difficult, uh, choice, um, but Allison has, uh, some previous experience with Kelly, um, and she worked in, under Allison in the, uh, accountant office in Marblehead. Uh, so she, um, with that experience, it was, um, clear that she was the, the best candidate for the job. Allison, do you wanna, I see you're on, do you wanna say anything?
Yeah, so just kind of reiterating what Tony said, we had about nine applicants for the position. We interviewed three, um, and Kelly was, you know, the top candidate. She has worked for me previously in Marblehead. She also has a very extensive banking background. Um, so I think she's gonna step into the role very nicely, um, and she's excited to join the team, so.
Great.
I'm losing track, I'm losing track of my numbers.
Right. I, I know how important it is to have, you know, good teammates and, uh, it sounds, it sounds like, um, you and Kelly, uh, will, will make a good, um, combination, so I'm excited to welcome her on board.
Yeah, that's great. All right, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Congratulations, Kelly, and to you too, Allison, for having a great assistant.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have, uh, youth soccer event request.
Let me take these, you. Okay, I got it. Uh, I move that the Board, uh, Board of Selectmen vote to approve the request for Nahat Youth Soccer on Saturdays from eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM from September eleventh, twenty twenty-one to November sixth, twenty twenty-one at the Flash Flow Soccer Field.
Second.
Any discussion? Have fun, kids. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Okay, we have a road race event request.
I move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request from the Demarcus family YMCA for the Stride Along the Tides 5K Road Race, September twenty-fifth from eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM.
Second.
Um, you can register for this race at www.ymcmetronorth.org where you will find the run signup registration site. There is a registration fee and proceeds fund their scholarship program for low to moderate income families in the community. The race will begin at the Lowlands Parking Lot. And that again is on September twenty-fifth in the morning at eight-thirty. Roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Uh, we have another road race.
I move, um, that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Humpa Nickel Five Mile Road Race on Saturday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at two PM.
Second.
Okay, uh, pre-registration for, for this race, which is on the thirtieth, will be on Friday, October twenty-ninth from six PM at the American Legion Life Saving Station. Uh, I don't know if Bobby Joe Blair or Bob Fields wants to, uh, make any further comment about this road race? I saw Bob was on earlier.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to make a comment. I'm, I'm sure Bobby Joe does as well, but, uh, you know, I'd like to say, first of all, I'm happy to see you all on the Zoom call this evening, as I feel like I'm missing so many of you after having seen so many of you every day while the Wall That Heals was here in town. And, uh, I just wanna again thank you on behalf of the Nahat American Legion Post Two Fifteen. We, like the town and so many other community members, are incredibly proud to have hosted the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall that heals mid-July. And while the days the wall was actually here were seemingly few, the planning, preparation, and work required were immense, uh, and long. And without revisiting all of the details that occurred over what became a two-year period, I just wanna say I could not be more humbled and proud of our community's support and participation from the executive engagement of the town through every department and personnel who actively and enthusiastically did whatever was necessary to ensure a successful event. Further, more than two hundred community volunteers supported this effort through financial and work donations. Volunteer activities at the wall was a twenty-four-hour event, which, as you may recall, the weather situation while the wall was here was less than ideal. But the town and community volunteers served with honor and commitment. This was truly humbling and inspiring. Now to the Humpa Nickel Road Race. While I have only lived in town for ten very short years, I understand and have seen the videotapes that the Humpa Nickel Road Race was at one time a highly popular and successful road race hosted in town by our American Legion. This race started and ended at the American Legion at our former Coolidge Road location. The Humpa Nickel Road Race has remained mostly dormant since that last Coolidge Road Race, but today I am super proud to come before you requesting your approval of our request in conjunction with the race committee here tonight, represented by Bobby Joe Blair. The Nahat American Legion is excited and proud to partner with Bobby Joe and her race committee, who are stepping up and are committed to restarting and continuing the tradition of the Humpa Nickel Road Race. We're happy to sponsor and host the activities associated with this event.
Great.
Dan, I'd just like to add that we're really excited to kind of piggyback off of the huge community event that we have with the Wall That Heals. It was super successful mainly because, um, all our community members, that kind of came together. And, um, we're looking forward to hosting another one very similar. But thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Glad to see the Humpa Nickel back.
Well, Josh, I'm, I'm glad I'm not gonna be chasing you for first place.
Those days are long gone, man.
Those days are long gone.
Anyway, um, but I plan to vote yes, but, uh, roll call vote.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Okay, moving on to ongoing business, um, approved parking ticket violation fees.
I'll get this, hold on one second.
Was, was there, uh, was there supposed to be something on there for the idling?
Yeah, that should've been scheduled already on the, it was in your packet.
In the packet, yeah.
This vote, uh, Selectmen Canty, this vote is going to confirm that idling violation.
Okay.
Make the vote, we can discuss it. Um, I move that, I'd move that the Nahat Board of Selectmen vote to approve the new parking ticket violations as presented, plus the addition of a fifty-dollar idling violation.
Second.
Any discussion? Um, well, we talked about this, um, idling topic at the last meeting, um, so that's being added to the fee structure and, um, we don't have it to show, but the minimum parking fee is now fifty dollars, uh, for most infractions and a hundred and three hundred for a couple other specific things, but most infractions are now fifty dollars. Anything else to add, Tony?
Well, I hope I don't get one of them. I hope I don't get one of them when I windshield any time, so.
Um, I, can you see my screen?
Uh, yes.
All right, so I just have the, the new ticket, um, I, the idling, idling was a violation that, um, you know, we discussed, uh, with SWIM, with Vibe, uh, paddock member of SWIM. Um, it is a significant issue and has a, has, makes a, um, significant impact on reducing carbon emissions by turning off, uh, your engine while parked. Uh, so it is an important one that we wanna take advantage of because of the impacts that those, um, carbon emissions have on climate change. Uh, so I'm happy that we're adding it in here, um, and I'm happy that we're updating our parking, you know, all of our violations, all of our parking tickets, uh, with the new, um, code structure, uh, that we adopted at town meeting this past May. Uh, so that's, um, I, I think Chief Furlong's on. I don't know if he wants to say anything about it.
I am. Can, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that every, everything got updated. Uh, I do apologize for earlier, um, with the, the new hire and, uh, just so that everybody knows that he is, uh, related to John Scobakis, who lives in town. Uh, he's, he's a great kid, solid kid, Norwich University. I, I can't speak highly, more highly of him, but he, he's gonna be a solid, uh, addition to the town, so. But as far as the, the ticketing, i- i- I'm glad that everything is updated and, uh, there are some certain things that we, we can ticket here now that we couldn't before as far as, uh, unregistered in, in, uh, uninspected, so that's, everything is good here.
Uh, Chief, um, Chief about unregistered, uh, is there, there is a bylaw, isn't there? Uh, you can't have more than, more than one unregistered vehicle in your, in your property? Are you for our time?
There is a bylaw. I'm not exactly sure exactly what that bylaw is as far as the unregistered vehicles on prop, on private property, but yeah, I, there is something, and, and yes, you're, you're absolutely right. I'd have to look into that.
Uh, Dan, uh, maybe you could look in there for me.
Sure can. You got it.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, roll call vote on the parking ticket violations.
Jean Candy, aye.
Mark, aye.
Josh Antrim, aye. Uh, we already had our joint meeting with the planning board to appoint the alternate members. Um,
Okay.
The Coast Guard housing deed.
Uh, I move to authorize the chair of the Board of Selectmen upon his review and approval to sign a new Coast Guard housing deed prepared by the General Services Administration that will cure a defect in a, in the chain of titles discovered by Hay, Hay, Hayes Engineering.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, so, uh, Tony, you can. Discussion. So uh, Tony, you can explain this better, but basically there was a strip of land that, that, that was not signed over by the G S A, I think. Describe that, please.
Dan, go ahead. You've been working closely on this one.
That's right. Uh, we, this is all in the wake of the town meeting vote to dispose of the eight acres over on, around Goddard Road. Hayes Engineering discovered a sliver of land that came into question during the multiple transfers back and forth between the federal government and the town of Nahat, given World War One, World War Two, and all that stuff. We actually hunted down the person that signed a deed from the G S A in two thousand and five, and she was more than, she recognized the problem. She's more than happy to uh remedy it. We are in the process now of creating a legal description that needs to go in the new deed. The former deed, two thousand and five, was actually signed by Mark Colan. So we just need authorization to just authorize uh the chair, in this case, to sign it just on behalf of the town. And that will cure that issue. The next step is to go to the planning board to seek an A N R, to seek a stormwater permit, and I, and something with regard to that turn at Gardner and Castle.
So I'm, Dan, so this is a, uh, this is not something that's going to be passed on to any future transfer of properties over there, right? This is going to remain in the town's ownership?
Right, it's part of the, part of the way. It's part of the public way. So it's basically part of Castle Road or the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be like become part of a, of, of one of the properties?
No, it's, no, it's not. It doesn't go into that area.
Yeah.
It has to do with the width of the road, and then it was accepted, then it was changed. It, it's, if you dig into the details, it gets very confusing after a while, but no, it's not part of the actual sort of livable area.
Okay.
So it's sort of a strip of the road and potentially sidewalk that is still technically owned by the federal government.
Well, well, that's, that's the issue. It was really unclear. Um, but the G S A is more than happy to help clarify it, and that's what we're doing now.
It, it, it came, it comes, it becomes an issue when we go to subdivide those lots regarding frontage with having that strip of potentially non-town owned land in, in between. Um, so that's part of it as well. So having that cleared up is gonna help us move forward.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote.
Jean Canty, I.
Mark, I.
Next is the Massport RNAV study.
Before we move on, Mr. Chairman, do you want, do you want a general update on that pro, the, the overall process and of uh Coast Guard housing and, you know, what next steps were the towns gonna be taking?
Uh, yes, please.
While we're on the subject?
Yep.
Um, so once this part is uh settled, um, the next step is for Hayes Engineering to submit um documents to the planning board for their review. Um, that's part of the subdivision process. Um, once it goes through that process, it'll go to the town-owned land study committee process to determine, you know, what the uh base value of the property should be. And then eventually, uh, the Board of Selectmen will have to vote, you know, to move it into the procurement process. Um, we voted at town meeting, well, part of the intent of the vote at town meeting was to provide a one-year notification to the existing residents before they have to uh leave the property. Uh, we'll likely be doing that in the next, in September. And once uh tenants leave, we'll be organizing the process of um making the lots uh vacant, open lots. So part of the, the other part that um Dan mentioned was where Castle Road meets Gardner Road. Uh, we may want to look into uh uh reshaping that intersection to make it a little bit more safe for the traffic that happens there. Um, Dan, do you, did I miss anything?
No, no, that, that, that's about right. It's, it's gonna take about a year or so to get all the authorizations and approvals and RFP stuff done. And uh, no, I think you hit it right on the, right on the head.
All right. Thanks for that summary. Um, the Massport RNAV study.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was um muted myself, so I had a comment, I had a question for um for Tony. So our policy now with current tenants, if someone leaves one of those housing, what is our policy in terms of leasing that again?
Well, more, all of our, pretty much all but one, I think, are month to month. Um, so, you know, it's, it's really up to us if we want to um, if someone were to leave tomorrow, if we wanted to try to uh fill it for the next year. Uh, but we would, we would give them notice uh with that, as we do now, that it's a month to month and that they would have to be out of the house by X date, uh probably September twenty twenty two. So we don't have a, we haven't um encountered that issue yet. Um, that's something that we can discuss as a group and come up with a policy if we want to keep them vacant or not. Uh, some of that, some of that will go into, I think probably will go into what's the condition of the unit when someone leaves? And, you know, how much is it gonna cost to bring the unit up to speed so that uh, you know, up to uh good condition to bring someone new in if it's necessary? So it's just gonna be a cost benefit analysis in that regard.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Welcome.
Anything else on the Coast Guard housing? All right, then, uh, Massport RNAV study. Tony, you wanna talk about that? I know that you sent a letter sometime back, voice in concern.
Sure, so it's gotten some, um, it's received some attention in the past few days because there was a Lynn Item article about the Swampscott Board of Selectmen voting to send a letter to Mass C A C, Massport C A C regarding the RNAV study and their desire to move um the same uh approach that we've been looking at for over a year now, um, further off of the coastline and more out to the ocean. Uh, so we got a lot of calls, a lot of emails, and there was a lot of social media talk about, you know, what are we doing? We've been, we have Bob D'Amico's, our um contact, our appointee on the C A C. He goes to all their meetings. There's a meeting coming up in September. Dan, do you know the day?
Yes, it's actually a hearing in September. It's a Massport hearing. And at that hearing, MIT is going to present their recommendations that we already have in writing. That recommendation is actually gonna be to accept the change in RNAF two-two L, two-two left. Um, but that's a Massport public hearing, and that will be, I believe, open for public comment. So folks should tune into that if they wanna say something or try to say something. The next Mass C A C meeting will be sometime in October, where they're going to determine, or at least begin determining what they're gonna recommend in terms of accepting the recommendation from MIT or rejecting it. And that's in October. One thing we can tell everyone now is that this approach is not being flown on a regular basis. Every now and again, it may be flown, uh, but it's not a regular um approach as of now. And we can expect it, even if it goes forward, it's not gonna be a regular approach for, I, I imagine at least a year. So there's still a long way to go, because remember, this has to be checked off by the FAA first, and they have their own process to go through. So it's a lo, it's, it's, it's a long burn.
Who, who, who requested the MIT study?
Uh, well, I imagine Massport did, because they're, they're, they're receiving it in um less, little less than a month now. So I believe Massport sought the study.
So we intend to be testifying at that hearing, and we'll submit written testimony with it. Um, that's something that we can, uh, Dan and I can work on drafting and have uh you, the board, review and vote on before that meeting. But we'll set, definitely want to take part in that. We'll publicize it so that other members of the community can join the meeting as well.
So Tony and Dan, um, there isn't any difference between what um Swampscott is asking and what um Massport is proposing, correct? That the flight comes over the causeway?
No, Swampscott wants, it, it's complaining. It, it doesn't want that. They, they, they want, if you can imagine, okay, imagine the aircraft is coming from, okay, so if you're looking at a map in Nahat, it would come with the upper right-hand corner. It would come in and fly over the causeway and then hit on the final approach right into two-two left. What Swampscott wants is that, that long leg from the right side of the map, as you're looking at it, to be even more over the water. But that has the effect of pushing it closer to Nahat. If you, if you imagine that straight line that turns into the final approach. So with Swampscott, Swampscott doesn't want the proposal either, but what they want actually imposes upon Nahat more because it pushes us, pushes that flight path closer to us, affecting more of the folks in Little Nahat.
How likely would that happen if, I mean, it seems that, that, that bank left is going to be even worse then.
You know, Tony and I were talking about that. You know, it's about passenger comfort, and you know, they don't want to turn the plane more than ten degrees because that gets people nervous, especially so, so low to the ground. I don't see it happening because that, that's too sharp of a turn, too low to the ground. Uh, they're only at about fifteen hundred feet, eighteen hundred feet at that point, so I, I don't, the Swampscott letter did not define what it wanted in particular. It just said, hey, push us further onto the water.
In my conversation, in my conversation with the town administrator, uh, it sounded like his concern was that um further north, a, a plane approaching from the north, you know, say it was flying over Swampscott or Salem or Marblehead. Um, and then is going to eventually cut across the causeway. Before it gets to the causeway, instead of flying over, you know, Fisherman's Beach, Kings Beach, be further out to sea and take a wider turn towards the causeway.
Well, I see.
So, you know, they're not trying, they're, the letter, uh, I called them because of the letter, and I had, Dan and I had the same, had that conversation. Um, their, their intent isn't to put it, you know, push traffic over Nahat. Um, their intent is to push it more over the water. Um, but they don't particularly, you know, have a, a, a plane that flies over the causeway or flies over Nahat, doesn't really make a difference to Swampscott. Uh, makes more of a difference to Lynn, that portion of Lynn.
Now, is, is this for, for both arrivals and departures or just arrivals?
Arrivals.
It was, it's what's called an approach. Uh, there's, arrivals are different. Arrivals actually occur further out into the ocean or further out to the, into the land. Approaches are much closer to the, to the, um, to the airport. So this is a, this is an approach, two-two left approach.
But it's, but it's planes flying into Logan, right?
Exactly, yes, it is.
Uh, so, you know, we're in this, we're in a situation where we um, you know, we don't, we are in favor of uh other communities um attempt to uh, you know, lessen the pollution and noise and negative impacts uh from planes flying over their property. We just don't want to take them on here. Uh, which, you know, creates a narrow window of options for Massport to consider. So um that's our message is, you know, we don't, we don't want to absorb any of these negative impacts. We're not asking to, you know, keep the negative impacts on others or uh create more on others. We're just asking not to uh create new negative impacts on us. You know, but there is, there's different planes, different approaches. Uh, you know, how, what's, you know, how far off of the exact line of the approach they're allowed to be? Is it closer to Nahat? You know, it's, those are the types of things that we're talking to them about.
So let's um, we, let's have that letter for the September eighth meeting, and maybe Tony and Dan, you can review it with us individually, potentially beforehand, get some in, or get some input anyway.
Yes. What I'd like to do, we, we did create a website for, you know, kind of a repository of information for folks to go to, and what I'd like to do is um put the letter on there and have, you know, other residents sign up, sign on to it if they like to. Uh, so the next meeting is gonna be uh September eighth.
Yeah.
And then, Dan, when is the uh hearing?
The hearing is September fifteenth, so we have a week of play there.
Okay.
I like the idea of uh, yeah, posting that letter and people can sign. That's sort of a petition type thing. That's what you're suggesting, right, Tony?
Yes. Okay.
Preserving East Point. See, at our, at, on June fifteenth, um town administrator, Tony Barletta, and I from the Board of Selectmen, and Jeff Blake as Town Council met with um Northeastern. I think uh by mutual agreement, we agreed to keep the, the details of these meetings and correspondence confidential, but uh I'm advised by council that we can speak in general terms and go to that. And um we um stated quite clearly and firmly that uh the Board of Selectmen stood with the commitment from the town as evidenced by the town meeting vote that uh we would uh that the twelve and a half acres that were subject of the um article, uh were committed to preserving that as conservation land. And suggested there might be alternate choices for Northeastern. Uh, subsequent to that meeting, we've had some back and forth via email. Uh, in the end, I think it's fair to say that actions speak louder than words and um Northeastern is um clearly pursuing their development plans in that uh land that we would like to see as conservation land as evidenced by their uh notice of intent filings with CONCOM and site plan review with the planning board. Um, so in response to that, we've scheduled an executive session at the conclusion of this meeting to uh confer, confer among the board and seek um legal counsel on what the next best steps are. So that would be my summary of um the situation. Um, Gene or Mark, I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add, or, or are you, Tony?
I just think, um, Mr. Chairman, that it's, it's important um to to point out that over seventy-five percent of the, of the town at town meeting voted um to conserve those twelve and a half acres. Um, and we, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I am committed to honoring that, that vote. Um, I am open uh uh to discuss other alternatives. Um, but in lieu of the fact that there may not be, then, you know, we'll see what happens. But I am committed to um to honoring the vote of the town.
I am as well.
Yeah, um, and me too. And, um, you know, I think that uh probably would, I don't think I'd be breaking the confidentially confidentiality agreement by saying that, you know, we believe that there are alternate locations and uh and that Northeastern could still pursue their academic goals and, and conserve that, preserve that land as conservation land. But um so we'll have some more discussions about that shortly.
Hey, just the one Hey, just one thing that it's probably a little premature to talk about it, but there was an article in the Globe. I don't know if anybody saw it. Merrimack had put a ban on heavy truck, heavy truck traffic on certain roads, which will take effect Sunday, August 15th. And it's the, the roads that they don't think can handle the heavy truck loads. And if you take and you walk or bicycle or whatever, that not heading in an easterly, northeasterly direction, right between, let's say, the entrance to the Science Center and 40 steps, about halfway. There's about 50 feet. In fact, Mark, I think you brought this up once. Maybe more. I just happened to stop and look at it. Truck traffic is not going to be supported. That, that embankment will not be supported by truck traffic. In fact, it's something worth looking at now. It's really that, that weak.
Yeah, that, that section in Hart Road is, that's come up before, Gene.
It's getting worse. Much worse. Just something to think about.
Yep. I guess, I guess I'll mention that the, uh, yeah, last night, um, the planning board hosted Northeastern Site Plan Review, uh, discussion. So, um, some people may have seen that. Is that on YouTube? Do you know, uh, Tony or?
I'm not sure if it's, it, uh, I'm not sure if it's on our website yet, if the link, the YouTube should be, uh, if it's not up, we should, we'll be able to get it up soon.
But in, in any event, that, that process has begun, uh, with the planning board. Northeastern has submitted their site plan, uh, for review with the planning board. So that process, um, is, uh, getting going. I think that's a 60-day process. So.
And if you don't mind, I just also add that, you know, if you look at site plan review, uh, you know, we should, solicit feedback from legal counsel, but I believe that, um, the Board of Health, AKA the Board of Selectmen, are part of the reporting process to the planning board. Um, and the planning board can seek input from other town boards and agencies, um, which would include items like traffic and utilities and things of that nature, you know, based on what Chairman Canty was just saying. So, there's a process, you know, there's a, there's a process involved here with the planning board where the town, and the Board of Health specifically, may need to provide comment per the zoning, uh, by law. So we should talk to council about that and see, uh, what the next step is in that regard.
They were talking last night in, in that planning board meeting about a Dropbox that they're going to put together for public comment.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, basically what we did was we created a Dropbox. Um, and the link to view the files in the Dropbox will be on the planning board's, uh, page on the website. Uh, so anybody submitting comment would submit it formally to the planning board by email. And then the planning board would upload it into the Dropbox. Uh, and then you can just go onto the planning board's page on the website, click on the link and it'll bring you to that folder. You can look at, you know, any of the, uh, submissions.
Yeah, really a great idea. I presume you were involved in that.
I appreciate that presumption. No, it was, it was Dan Berman's, uh, the chairman's idea. Uh, we weren't really sure how it would work. Uh, the original plan was to throw, to actually put the documents on the website itself, but some of them, especially the site plan submitted by Northeastern have so much, storage data involved in it that it would just bog down the website. So we, you know, talked about it and came up with this Dropbox idea and it hopefully works well.
Yeah, I hope so.
I guess I'll just mention for those who don't know that, um, uh, Northeastern has filed two notices of intent with the Conservation Commission, the conservation commission. One notice of intent for the seawater intake project and a separate one for the Coastal Sustainability Institute. And, um, the Conservation Commission has, uh, jurisdiction over the Wetlands Protection Act. That's the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Um, areas as well as the local, Nahant's local wetlands bylaw. And, um, the Conservation Commission has voted to approve to the, uh, state Wetlands Protection Act with conditions. I think they are meeting right now, in fact, to define those conditions. I think their meeting is happening tonight and, and they, uh, rejected the applications, under the local Nahant Wetlands bylaw. Uh, so that's the status of the filing Conservation Commission. There's nothing else on Northeastern. It's time for the town administrators' report.
Okay, thank you. Um, couple, a few things to go over tonight, uh, that aren't listed here. The first that is listed is outdoor movie nights. We've been working. This has been something that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, but because of COVID and other things, it just hasn't happened. Uh, we are very close to finalizing two dates in September. Uh, hopefully September 3rd and September 10th, which are Friday nights for outdoor, uh, two outdoor movies behind the fire station at Flash Road Park. Equipment donated by Mike Galan of Ocean View. And the movies, uh, we're hoping to present are The Sandlot and Toy Story. Uh, we're going through the process right now, securing the proper licensing so that we can offer those movies and hopefully we get good weather and, um, you know, kids come down and, and watch and have a nice, uh, you know, outdoor evening before the end of the summer. I also wanted to, we, many people this week should have, you know, everyone in town should have received a postcard this week regarding new recycling carts. Those should be delivered, uh, next week to your doorstep. Additional cost, uh, to you as a resident, uh, for these recycling carts. It's only for recycling. You'll still be able to use, uh, whatever trash barrels and how many trash barrels you currently do. There's no change to that at this time. Uh, only is changing how we handle curbside collection of recyclables. The carts, uh, the new carts, once you receive them, will be the only ones that are collected by waste management. So if you receive it, uh, you should receive it Wednesday or Thursday next week, which means next week, not tomorrow. Uh, not this Thursday, uh, Friday, Saturday, but the following. Once you receive it, you'll be, you'll need to use it immediately. Um, your old recycling cart can be, uh, disposed of by marking an X on it and putting it out on the day of trash and waste management will collect it. Um, or you can repurpose it for trash or yard waste or other things. And we're very excited about, uh, these carts, being distributed, uh, having a uniformed cart with a heavy-duty lid, uh, is going to help reduce, uh, litter. It's going to help reduce uh, wild animal activity. And it's going to actually, uh, be a faster collection. So in, therefore reducing carbon emissions of the trucks that are actually doing the collection. So, we received a grant that cut the cost of these in half, uh, for the town. Um, so a very good story and happy that we're finally here. I, uh, coyotes, uh, speaking of wild animals, the coyotes, coyote issue obviously is, uh, continuing to be an issue of, of ours, uh, one that we're taking very seriously. I know all three selectmen, you know, we speak uh, on an individual basis daily about this issue. You know, so many, uh, domestic pets have been, uh, lost because of coyote activity. Um, we've, you know, spoke, spoken with the state. We have looked at what's happening in other communities. There's been two, uh, reports in other communities in Massachusetts of uh, humans being bit by coyotes. Uh, one of which was down the Cape on a National Park Service, uh, property. That coyote was tracked down. It was shot, um, and they are exploring, uh, new harassment techniques to promote on that property. And the other one, what I think was in Abington.
Arlington, I think.
Arlington. And, uh, I don't believe they, they're, they're, the, uh, challenge that they have now is to find the coyote that actually bit, uh, the person. So, you know, we, we know that, uh, there's a lot of requests coming in for us to relocate or to, you know, trap or hunt the coyotes. And everything that we hear from the state and from wildlife is that, that's not an option at this time, even in that situation where you have, um, human, um, interaction as far as aggressive behavior, you're just seeking out that individual coyote. We have to learn to live with the coyotes, but harass the coyotes so that they, uh, learn to avoid humans. That means no feeding them, no putting out, you know, having, um, pet food out, out, outside your house isn't a good idea. Making sure your trash is closed, uh, is, uh, is closed lid and secured. Um, there was a report of, uh, beating coyotes on the beach this past weekend. We obviously cannot be allowing that. So we're looking into some signage there. And a lot of the other stuff I hear is, you know, this coyote just walked by me and didn't even care and it was just leisurely trotting by. You know, so my response to that comment is A, uh, that technically doesn't qualify as aggressive behavior by a coyote. And B, uh, what did you do when that coyote casually walked by? Uh, because what you should be doing is um, yelling, screaming, harassing, making that coyote feel uncomfortable, getting them to understand that leisurely walking by or approaching you is not okay. You know, we, we've talked to the state a lot about can we trap or can we relocate? And this is, this is the response we get from them. The behavior that we've, um, experienced that we're reporting up doesn't qualify as aggressive, unusual behavior. Uh, so the tips that we are receiving is how to harass the coyotes so that they learn to avoid us and our pets. One method that they talked about in other communities was, uh, using a whistle to make loud noises. You know, making yourself as large as possible by spreading your arms and screaming and kicking or whatever, something of that nature. Uh, so the town has purchased about 500, um, whistles that are gonna hopefully be in on Monday. Uh, as soon as they get here, as soon as they get here, we will, um, make them available here in the town hall and also at, uh, the fire station and the police station. Those are free, uh, to our residents. I want to grab one and, you know, keep it with them, tie it to their leash, uh, for their animals so that when they're out walking their dog, uh, they have something, you know, that they can make noise with. Um, and there's a lot of other techniques available online that we'll be putting, is on our website now, but we will, um, you know, elevate it to the front to draw some additional attention to it.
Tony, would it be worth it to put something on the website listing precautions to take, just like an information piece?
Yeah, so it's, it's on our website, um, but we may want to, you know, move it up to the front. Uh, cause, you know, people may, we just take it right from the Mass Wildlife page. And some, we can repost on Facebook as well.
Yeah, I could see that, um, done. And I liked that one from the Humane Society that they emailed you, uh, the other day too. Hopefully we can get that up there. It's, it covers the harassment part, but also, um, the challenges associated with hunting or trapping, um, the animal. So, you know, coyotes become habitualized, um, get used to being around hu- human presence unless they're harassed. So what we need to do, um, as you pointed out, Tony, is harass them sort of at every turn. So like a group effort so that they become uncomfortable. Every time they're around people, they get harassed and, uh, go back to, let's say they're more natural reclusive state at least and, um, um, you know, where they won't be, um, you know, running out of town until they run out of food, but, um, at least they'll be less emboldened. So it really needs to be a group effort. So I hope people, go down to the fire department, police department and town hall and grab these whistles and, uh, we just kind of gang up on these, these coyotes and, um, instill some fear in, into, uh, behavior.
Yeah, especially, uh, Mass Wildlife mentioned that, you know, from now until October, especially the fact that they had, um, puppies, uh, back in May, uh, they are, you know, aggressively searching for food to gear up for the winter uh, and support their, their pups. So, um, really make sure that your trash is secure. Make sure you're not leaving food outside for wild animals or domestic animals. Um, and, you know, harass them at every opportunity that, you know, every interaction that you have.
Yeah, Tony, um, in the, um, in the unlikely event that a coyote comes down the Flash Road playground and bites child, what is the town's plan to respond to that?
So with guidance from the state, I, at that point, my understanding is that it does qualify to track the animal, potentially either relocate it or kill it. Um, but, you know, it's the, the issue that Arlington is running into right now is being able to track the actual coyote that, that did that. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's going to be tough. It's, it's going to be tough because we're not, we're not going to be, you know, we're not there right when it happens. So.
Yeah, Tony, I think that you and the chairman have been doing a great job at, uh, you know, looking at all of the avenues, uh, and all the possible responses that a community could have. I'd like to have town council, um, chime in and just say, you know, just discuss how the, how not only Nahant, but all communities in the Commonwealth are limited in their response.
Yeah, no. Yeah, we are limited. First of all, we have a, we can't fire off a firearm in Nahant, right? Folks can't do that. Um, so there's a bylaw against that. So there's, that's out of the picture. And the state does give private persons the right to hire someone to trap a coyote if they are, um, somehow damaging the property or something along those lines. There is some latitude there and you can hire a, an, a, an animal agent that's around, I think there's one in PB, one in Salem that can do that. Problem is.
Problem Animal Control Officer.
A PAC, but the problem is they're very, very elusive, very, very bright. So they're hard to trap. So they're, they're, and relocation is really not an option. Even if we were allowed to use lethal force, the fact remains is they're just going to be replaced by other coyotes. So. The fact remains is they're just going to be replaced by other coyotes. So the 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 best technique at this point seems to be prevention, which, as Tony said, is constant harassment, you know, make it make it uncomfortable here for them. And that's what's being preached by the state.
Thanks, Dan.
It's it's not an easy issue to deal with, no doubt about it.
That I guess that research that you collected, Dan, and emailed to me, we should get that up on the website, too. Maybe we need to have just like a whole separate coyote page. It's linked from the link from the main page and get all this information out there and get some community-wide harassment going on and and at least change their behavior before they get too emboldened. And as you say, Mark, you know, start coming to the playgrounds where kids are playing.
One option that we do have is very much consistent with what the state suggests is to, you know, find their habitat and ruin it. You know, destroy their habitat, make it make it so they have no place to stay here and they have to go somewhere else. That's an option.
I know some people have said they know where the dens are, so look into that, too. Sure. So come get your whistles next week and we'll see what we can do to modify their behavior.
Thank you. So the other couple of updates I have, we had a successful mandatory pre-bid meeting on the sewer force main. Last week, we had three or four very qualified contractors attend the meeting. Weeks bids are due at the end of the month. So I'm happy to report that, you know, we're we're expecting a, you know, competitive bid of, you know, highly qualified contractors for the job. And I'm looking forward to the results of that process at the end of the month.
For people to know, that's that's the bids for replacing the sewer main along the lineway from the roughly from the rotary to the the Lynn Sewer and Water Treatment Plant on further down the lineway.
Yes.
Looks like shovels in the ground, October-ish.
Hopefully, we're we're somewhat waiting on the construction, you know, the construction schedule will be somewhat determined through the contracting phase. Once we select a winning bidder and then as far as breaking ground, you know, we're we're working closely with DCR who manages that roadway and when they will allow us to get started. But we're we're hoping to have our, you know, temporary bypass installed sometime in October, latest November. Today, Chairman Antrim, myself, Zach Taylor, our DPW superintendent, met with Congressman Moulton and his staff to talk about a project that we applied for funding through his office for. They we unfortunately weren't able to receive that funding in the first round, but Congressman Moulton's office reached out to us asking to meet and discuss it further as a potential future avenue for funding. That project is the Short Beach Dune Resiliency Project. Improving, you know, for cost of construction to improve the accessways and increase the height of the dune. We applied for, I think, 1.4 million dollars. We had a very, it was a quick meeting, but it was great. He asked a lot of important questions. We went out to Short Beach and took a look at the different issues that we're experiencing there. And he seemed and his office seemed extremely supportive of what we're trying to do. And, you know, I felt optimistic about our our chances come September, end of September, in the next round to apply for funding. So I'm happy to report that that that's moving somewhat in a positive direction. Mr. Chairman, do you want to mention anything?
I think it was encouraging that they took the time to come out here and review the project. Tony, you walked them through the preliminary design and and the issues that we face in storms with overflow at Short Beach. And then they came out on site to Short Beach and saw the issue with their own eyes. And I think that was valuable and certainly was encouraging that they they Seth and two of his staff members came. So you know, encouraging they took the time to come out and look at that. And I think the the words were encouraging also. So it was a good meeting.
A couple of CPC project updates I'd like to provide are the lowland softball field upgrades with fencing and benches and backstop are all in installed and in great shape. It looks great down there. Our Spring Road Basketball Court is about 50% of the way done. It's been overlaid and painted. Next step is for basketball hoops and fencing and tree planting. Flash Road Tennis and Basketball Courts slash pickleball courts. We have signed the contract with the contractor and the engineer. We're hopefully having a pre-construction meeting in the coming weeks and hopefully breaking ground in early September on Flash Road. I don't have a timeline for that as far as, you know, completion date, but we'll get some more information through that pre-construction meeting on that. I've met with the library as well as our engineer who's in charge of the town hall and library envelope projects. So we're meeting with them, talking, we need to get draft bid docs to Mass Historical Commission by the end of September. So we're working pretty quickly there to see how we can get those those docs approved and get that project out to bid as soon as possible. The Little League backstop, I believe, is installed and let's see, what else do we have?
I know today, a couple of members of the Open Space Committee walked the Gardner Battery invasive species area with Zach Taylor and kind of laid out that plan. Looks like that will be moving forward quickly. That's removing a lot of the invasive species undergrowth and debris that's in that area. They'll leave some, they'll leave mature trees and then plant some grass underneath and over a few years we'll put in undergrowth, native species, undergrowth, shrub type things in that area. So that's coming pretty soon as well. Zach had some few different outfits. He was going to ask to bid on that work quite soon. So that's that's starting to roll. I just wanted to comment, too, on the Flash Road tennis courts and basketball courts. I know that's something that people are very eager to see reconditioned. What happened there was a few years ago CPC funds were approved for that, but when the bids came in, they weren't quite enough to get the job done. So at this last town meeting in May, additional funds were approved so that that project can be fully funded. So that's why it's been sitting for a couple of years. But good to hear, Tony, that the wheels are in motion because I you know, people are eager for that. And yes, there will be pickleball lines.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Hello, George Mahoven over here in Little Nahat. I haven't heard you mention anything about what you're going to do for the Little Nahat Playground. I've heard all the playgrounds over Big Nahat. What's the timeframe for doing over Little Nahat Playground?
Thank you, Mr. Mahoven. Yep, next, that's next on my list here is Little Nahat Playground. We have $24,000 for a new there was a there was a slide, a climbing slide structure that we removed a couple of years ago because it was so badly rusted and dangerous. So the $24,000 is to replace that piece. We also have some FEMA funds to restore the surface area. So taking out all the weeds, putting down fabric, putting down new material on the bottom. So we want to install that new piece of equipment first. The other part of that project is the dune adjacent to the to the playground.
Yes, I'm well aware of that. Yep.
So we have some FEMA funds for that. It's currently, I would say it's in the final design stages, hopefully going for local permitting shortly, and hopefully we'll be getting into that project this fall. Because, you know, it really makes sense to repair that dune and build up some strength to it, some resiliency before doing the playground project because God forbid, we run into a storm this winter and it washes everything we do away.
That makes sense.
We have some, we do, I've received a few options from our playground supply company. And I spoke with, you know, my main contact, the Petrucci's who live right there. I spoke with them yesterday afternoon and we talked about putting a little neighborhood meeting together to talk through this and what options we've been received so far and, you know, other things that the neighborhood might want to include in that playground. We may need to do some, you know, additional fundraising of some sort or go to town meeting for more money in the future for like other things that we might, if if we bust the budget with 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 ideas, but I think it's time that we get together with them. The other, the other piece that I talked to him about was another push from the that area of Little Nahat has been to create a crosswalk to get to Doggy Beach in between the playground and Doggy Beach. We were able to have the MBTA pay for, study, design and construct a crosswalk and improved bus stop at that at that location. So it's 100% design. We don't have a schedule yet. They're hopefully getting out there in the next month or so, which will help improve slow traffic down in that area, too.
Where would the crosswalk be? At the bottom of the crest of the hill? I mean, that's a very dangerous intersection, not intersection, but very dangerous spot. When you're basically at the the bottom of Little Nahat Road where it meets the hot road, you have very little time to see where where the Petrucci's driveway is, if that's where the crosswalk is going to be. You have very little time to really see a pedestrian in the roadway there.
So we're going to improve some signage saying that there's a pedestrian crossing, you know, up ahead. And they did a traffic study. They actually did like a traffic study and engineering study to determine where that the safest place to locate that was. The current bus stop actually sits at the bottom of Little Nahat Road at the top of the hill. And there's zero, the the guard rail is right there on the inbound side. And there's really no visibility or lack of visibility and and the speeds are still really high at the top of the hill. As they come over the hill, they get view of the speed sign and traffic actually slows down significantly from a little bit like before the Little Nahat intersection and then as you gradually get down towards like that speed sign. So through their engineering study, they determined that the safest place would be closer to that speed sign, closer to the playground on the bottom of the hill.
Well, I like the idea of you, excuse me, upping the dunes and so on and so forth. It makes a lot of sense to do that first before you spend all that money to improve the playground and have a storm come by and wash it all away. So I think that's a great idea on your part and I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Lastly, I know we're, I know we're running long here, but we've been talking about the new website for the Town in the Hot. We're hopefully launching this in the next day or two. I know the last like three meetings I've said that, but it really is happening. I'd like to share my screen and give you a, for those, for those of you that have stuck around onto this meeting so far, give you a quick little preview of what the new website is going to look like. This here is our homepage. One of the biggest improvements of this site is in the top right corner, we have a search bar. So if you go on here and type trash or dog or water or sewer or anything of that nature, it's going to bring you a result of that of that search, something that we desperately needed in the last in the last website. The other improvement or one of the bigger improvements is that this screen automatically adjusts based on the size of your screen or if you're on a mobile device. Here we have our, we have a number of menu options to choose from. We have some quick links in the middle. We have some social media connect, quick links in the top right. Code Red, how to sign up for Code Red. We felt that was important to keep that consistently up on the right side. If you scroll down, this next will be it's news, so blog items that when we, you know, let's say I post something about the Farmer's Festival Survey, it'll pop up here. It'll automatically get pushed out to our social media feeds, which will then link you back to our website. This is, and this is a scrolling list. You can click on more news that'll bring you to, you know, a longer page of recent stories. The next item is the calendar. So this will give you, you know, the the updates of the, you know, the upcoming days will be right here. Larger for you to see, but if you click View Calendar, it'll bring you to the month view. There's also quick links for town news here on the right, places around town. We're hopefully going to be expanding this places around town to almost list like rules and regulations related to those areas. So for instance, what type of events or activity is allowed or, you know, and like you know, Lodge Park or Bailey's Hill or, you know, Short Beach, you know, different things Tudor Beach. Then on that page would include, you know, the link to an event permit or a bond, a beach bonfire permit, things of that nature. Committees and boards. Here's a list of all your different committees and boards. You can click on, let's say, Board of Selectmen. This gives you a brief description. It has the Board of Selectmen on the right. From here, you can click to Meeting Archive. It'll bring you to all of the video and audio for the for the specific year. What we'll also, what we're working on to include here is a link. A side project that we're doing is our our YouTube account creating playlists based on committees and their year. So you could here would say for videos of Board of Selectmen meetings for the year 2011, click here and it would automatically launch you over to our YouTube channel for that committee and for that given year.
Looks great, Tony. And no actions required, right? It's just, you know, as soon as you launch, when when anyone goes to nahat.org, this is what they would see.
Exactly.
And probably by next Monday, this is what they'll be seeing.
Yeah. Another huge piece of this of this website that we have almost pioneered. And I know that the developer that we've worked with has actually advertised it to other communities is submit a committee notice. So when we decided to move all of our committee public notices to the website, how we process that in an efficient manner. So a committee member, let's say the Board of Selectmen, we're going to submit a meeting notice. You click on this link. It brings you to this page. You simply write your committee board name and whether it's a meeting or hearing, your location, date, time, who's organizing it. Here you list your agenda. You can actually insert the link if it's Zoom. Who's organizing it? Here you list your agenda. You can actually insert the link. If it's Zoom, you can actually insert the Zoom link. So if somebody goes to that calendar uh date and the Board of Selectmen meetings on the date, they have a link, they can just click the link instead of having a. Find Zoom and put in the meeting ID and password. Once you do that and you hit submit event. The town clerk gets an email update saying she has a new committee notice pending. She clicked to review. She hits review that one link. Once she hits approve. It gets a date and time span, uh, date and timestamp. And it says approved by town clerk on X date at X time. And it automatically gets pushed to the calendar. Um, before it was. Print out the notice, hand stamp it, scan it in, send it to the webmaster, and then when they posted it to the calendar. It technically met the forty-eight hour timeframe. This is done almost instantly. Um, the other beauty of that is instead of it being a scanned document or picture, by typing in an agenda item here. Um, it becomes a searchable word on the community calendar. So if we ever need to look back at. You know, when was um. You know, when did the uh, when was? Nahat Police Reserve Officer Campabasso appointed? You go to the calendar, you search Campabasso, it's gonna bring up the agenda from tonight. And then you can go to Board of Selectmen page and look up minutes or video or anything of that nature. So this is, this is a. Um, massive upgrade and it it's. So it's working so well that, as I said, the developer's actually advertising this as something to sell to other communities.
Uh, I told.
What's that?
I'm sorry, Tony. This is George Mulholland calling again. Um, you know how important this runway stuff is to me. Um, you mentioned about a. A petition that gonna be, gonna be able to be signed on the website. Is it gonna be very easy to find that petition on this website? If so, could you show me how you would do that? I'm, I seem to have a very hard time. With the computers. That's why I'm on this Zoom call so late. It took me forever to get on this Zoom call. Cause I'm not very versed in 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 computers at all. I'm surprised I even get on the Zoom call to tell you the truth. So how would I get a, get about on this petition to sign? About, you know.
The easiest, the easiest way is you just type in this search. You would type in RNAV or. Or whatever it's, you know, titled, but, you know, and it's gonna come up. So this search bar is gonna produce any results that. You know, your search word triggers. So that's.
And hopefully this is gonna be all ready to go by Monday of next week?
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we talked about the petition, so uh, we are gonna be drafting that. The Board of Selectmen are gonna vote on it September eighth. The hearing is September fifteenth. So once the board vote on it, we're gonna push it out and hopefully get people to sign on in a week's time and. Um, continue to, you know, it's not the last time to submit, but we're gonna hopefully get a good number of signatures. By the fifteenth to submit.
And and I I don't mean to um distract everybody, but on that point, what is? The town stance on all this? I've been listening and I haven't figured out what the town stance is, living over here in Little Nahat.
Come back. Why don't we come back to that? Uh, okay. Citizens forum, because we did. Spend a decent amount of time on it, but I know you weren't there, but we'll come back.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
You're welcome. Um, so places around town, you know, like I said. You're gonna, you have a number of different um places around town here. We'd like to include uh parks. And another thing that, you know, I know is uh, um. Uh. Chairman Antrim was asking for was a place where. Uh, people could get information about projects happening around town. Uh, so that's something that we're probably gonna put here under community. Um, and it'll be a listed um item underneath community that says projects around town and it'll talk about. You know, have all the CPC projects and what the status is and, you know, what, you know, any type of relative information regarding that. Um. Galleries. And, you know. Contact Town Hall is another one here. So that's, there's your quick preview.
It looks awesome.
I hope that was quick. Considered quick. Um.
Been a long wait, but worth the wait, Tony. Looks really awesome. Can't wait.
Yeah, it looks great. Very excited to launch.
Sure. Search bar alone is. Is uh. Worth the expense because, uh, you know, there's so much information on our website, but uh, it's not always easy to find as I think most people know. So.
Got that right.
Okay, so that completes my report.
All right, uh, next on the agenda is, actually before we do that. Uh, we skipped quickly from opening comments uh to the planning board appointment. So. I need to get a chance to ask um Mark or Gene if they had any additional comments before we move to citizens forum.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, just one, uh, if I could. A couple of people have complained about, and I'm sure a lot of people complain about coming into town. From the north uh entrance into the rotary at the beginning of the causeway. A solid line in the, in, with no perforated line. So as you come around and you go to cut over, which is uh difficult enough. It's difficult to get into that. Nahat lane because you show a solid line. So I went down and I looked at it. And Tony, I think it's something we could probably take a look at. And change that solid line to a perforated line. So that people wouldn't be afraid of crossing that solid line. And this, this is just in the last couple of weeks, I've had two or three comments. I don't know who does that, whether it's DCR. State.
I don't think that's, Ja- Jane, I'm gonna jump in here. I don't think that's a good idea personally. Uh, I think the way it is uh works well. You're coming from Swampscat into the heart. You have the right of way. You don't cross that white line. Uh, I mean, you take a right into the heart. Um, you should not cross that white line when you're coming from Swampscat to the heart.
Yeah, the design of it is that. You pull into Nahat in the left lane of the causeway.
Right.
The, the solid line, if you are uh coming from Lynn and you're on the right. Far right and you're within that solid line, you enter Nahat in the right lane of the causeway.
Okay. Now, I, I s- I see exactly what you're saying. I think the confusion is. Whether that solid line prevents people from cutting over from that outside lane into Nahat. And yeah, it probably isn't a good idea.
The question is yes, it does. That's what a solid line is for.
Yeah.
You should, you're not supposed to cross it.
Okay.
All right, anything else before we do citizens forum? All right, citizens forum.
Yeah, I, I know Mr. Mulholland had, you know, brought up the um, RNAV study uh. And asked, you know, what's the town stance on it? Uh, what we've been. Essentially pushing for is uh not, you know, we're, we're somewhat. Towing a delicate line of um, you know, strong force against adding negative impacts to the town in the hot. But we're not um advocating against removing negative impacts to our neighbors. Um, so. There's a lot of different data and studies uh conducted by MIT. About, you know, what type of planes produce, what type of sound, at what type of angle and speed. Um, so we are trying to get into, you know, the weeds of that information to essentially create a. Or push Masport to create a rule that is gonna have the least negative impact to us. Um, our neighbors, you know, our, our community, communities surrounding us. Um, are, have been, you know. Experiencing those negative impacts for a long time and they're looking to uh remove them from themselves, which we completely understand and support. Uh, but we just, you know, don't want to absorb them here in the hot.
Yeah, but. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but um, I still haven't got an idea of what you're saying. Are you trying to say that you want these planes going over the causeway? Cause that's not gonna help us over here in Little Nahat. We've been inundated for the last, I don't know how many years. I've been in this house for thirty years. And the runway four right, they, 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 they kill Little Bahat. Big Bahat isn't really involved in any of this. It's all Little Bahat. And runway four right, which is also runway twenty-two left for the arrivals. It, it, it's gonna completely kill us. They're already doing it now already. And they're flying in the same pattern. And when you call the noise abatement program. They tell you that the planes are flying over the halfway house and they're not. I have a clear view of the halfway house and almost a clear view of the Tides Restaurant. And when these planes are turning, basically they're turning over the Tides Restaurant. And they're flying down at the northern edge of Little Bahat, either that or flying over Little Nahat. And every time I complain and get a, excuse me, every uh, either a letter or knowledge done by email. They tell me that the planes are flying X amount of, a half a mile away, nine tenths of a mile away, and they're not. And the, and the, and the person who, um, the manager of, of the noise abatement, Frank Acavino. Had, had the audacity to tell me that I cannot tell where these planes are flying. And how close they are or how far they aren't from the halfway house. So I don't understand why Nahat is gonna say, yeah, put them over the causeway. Why Nahat isn't gonna say, just leave it as it is. I don't think the people over in Medford, over in Milton and over in um. Um, Somerville, they, I don't think they really care where the planes go as long as they're not flying over their house. You know, people over Big Nahat, excuse me. Go ahead.
George is absolutely correct. Right now, for the last year or maybe more. The, the, the arrivals are flying directly over Little Nahat. And the departures are going between Little Nahat and Big Nahat right over the coast guard. And that goes on every day, all day. So George, you're absolutely right on, on your assessment.
So wh- what are we gonna do about it? Uh, my question is what, what you, you, uh, Tony had mentioned he met with one of the um, state senators. Why wasn't he, uh, why aren't we meeting with them and having them um on our side to get these planes to? To fly where they have been down the Lynch Channel for the last thirty years? I don't understand this. All the onus is gonna be here on Little Bahat. And unfortunately, people of Big Nahat don't understand that because they're not living this hell. I'm getting waking up on Sunday mornings at five thirty in the morning. From these planes taking off on runway four right and either flying over my house or flying right along the edge of the water. Of, of the northern edge of Little Bahat is what I call it. And I get, I get no satisfaction. And you can see I'm very frustrated because I'm, my, my voice is yapping up and I'm not mad at the selectmen. I'm mad at the fact that nothing seems to be, have been done.
Uh, all right, Mr. Mulholland. So uh. It, it's fine. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. You and I have had this conversation multiple times. Um, the town, you know, supports you. The town supports Little Nahat. Um, the, the current. Um, conditions that you're experiencing are not a designed flight path. It occurs. I'm not saying it doesn't. Um, the RNAV study has to do with a. Different type of technology. Dan, jump in uh whenever you want, because I know you're, uh, you're, you're more um experienced in. Uh, the flight technology than I am, but the way I understand it is that. The RNAV study is a different type of technology that allows for, I guess I would say less. Variable off of a designed path than the current type of technology that planes use. So. Um, and with that, they would be able to produce a flight path that planes would have. You know, would stick to more often.
Well, they don't. That's the problem.
They don't now. You don't, they don't now. They don't now because that technology is not installed and it's not being utilized in that way at this time.
Well, to my belief, it's, it is. To my belief, the RNAV is already in, in, in place and these planes are flying almost the exact same flight pattern every single time. So I don't understand why you keep saying the RNAV's not in, in, in use.
The flight path for that runway. It goes over one A. It does not go over the causeway. And they do not. Adhere to the new flight path that they're experimenting with now or they're studying now. Um, so that's the public process that they're going through is to change the flight path.
Tony, I've been living in this house for thirty years and the flight path has been the same regardless of RNAV and no RNAV. And, and, and no one seems to really care about it. Um.
What I'm saying is, what I'm.
Let me, can I finish, please? You, you had mentioned a petition and you're gonna, you're gonna have a petition eight days before we go to this public meeting? Why can't this petition be made now? So we can have a chance of getting a lot more signatures now instead of a week. One, it gives us one week to get, get people to sign up. And it's all on the computer. What happens with people like myself that can't get on the computer? Mark Kalanick sat there one time at one of the select meetings and said, give me the clipboard, give me the, the. See, I get so flustered sometimes. I don't know what I'm saying.
Yeah, you go side, go door to.
Give me the thing I can sign and I'll go around door to door and have people sign, sign the petition.
You have every ability to do that now.
I don't know how to, and I'm asking you people to, to help me out and make out the petition and I'll go around and have it signed. I don't know how to word a petition. I'm not, I'm not a, a lawyer. I don't know how to make it so it's legal and binding. I have no idea. So I'm asking you guys to make the petition and why aren't you doing that? Why aren't you getting the petition ready and doing all that?
We are doing that, but it takes, you know, in order, for the Board of Selectmen as a group. To vote in favor of a letter that we're gonna submit as testimony. It requires a Board of Selectmen vote that can only be done during an open meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is September eighth. That doesn't preclude your ability to write. I am against the proposed flight path change and then go door to door and have people sign it. Uh, you can do that. We are going through this process. We've, again, it's not the last time that we're gonna be able to submit testimony. Uh, but we'll be able to get it done by doing it online. We should be able to get a number of signatures in a very short period of time. And it can be printed out and signed, you know, in that week as well.
Uh huh. I understand that, but it's just, I, I, I just wish that um, again, I, 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 I don't, again, know. It, it, it seems like, that seems too simple almost to write that petition, but that, if that's legal and binding. Then I guess I will do that and get some written petitions, um, some written signatures. Um, again, because I don't think a lot of people will, um, hopefully a lot of people will sign the um, online petition. Cause I think it's most important to let them know because again, this only affects Little Bahat. Doesn't affect Big Bahat at all. With this new runway change.
Maybe we can uh get the letter sooner and um, get the signatures on our draft version and. Approve retroactively on the eighth.
I wouldn't recommend that. We're, we're. We don't, we are, our letter. Should be discussed amongst the three of you in open session and you should vote on it before anybody else signs it.
Okay, so maybe what we can do, uh, George is, is uh, get everybody sort of queued up so that they know. On September eighth, it'll be available for signing and uh. You know, we can do some groundwork, you, you and uh, we can do some groundwork to let people know that this petition's coming and. And uh, get ready to sign so we can have as many signatures. Immediately after September eighth in advance of the September fifteenth hearing.
That'd be wonderful, but a- again, I still haven't heard what the, the selection's. Point of view in all this is, are you are gonna agree or disagree to, uh, with this new runway change?
I think it's, well, I mean, obviously we, we, we. It's, it's, it's frankly, it's a delicate thing, right? Because uh. You know, we. We're gonna look at. The details of those approaches and say, we don't want any. Negative impact in the hot, but.
Yeah, that should be the end of it. Never mind, but we don't want any impact to the people of Little Nahat.
Yeah, so I, I guess that, that can be the sum total of the, of the letter potentially.
I would think so. I mean, I, I would think you want to protect your own first before you're worried about anybody else.
Of course, of course, that's what.
It doesn't sound like that to me. It doesn't sound like that to me. It doesn't sound. Other towns incurring this, this noise. They don't care if the noise comes over to my, my side of town. And I'm sure if it was over in Big Nahat, they would be all upset too. So this, this thing about Swamp Scott and we're gonna work with Swamp Scott, let Swamp Scott do their own stuff. Why are we helping Swamp Scott? Why aren't we doing our own stuff to protect our own citizens here in Little Nahat and say, we're dead set against this runway change because it's gonna drive people, it's gonna drive me out of this town. And I've been in this town for fifty-eight years and it's, it's hellish over here. You people just, well, 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 well.
Mr. Mahoven, I'm asking you, please, to calm down and have some respect, please. We've been working on this with you for over a year. We completely agree with you. We support you. We are going to push for no negative impacts on the town Nahat. We're not working with Swamp Scott. We're not working with our neighbors to help their issue. We're working on and for the town of Nahat and their residents. That is what we're doing. I've had this conversation with you multiple times. I'm asking you, please, to just calm down. Know that we have your back. Know that we support you and be part of this. Let's work together on it.
I, I am part of this. So you're telling me that you're gonna say, no, we don't want this runway change. That's all I want, that's all I wanna hear you say.
Yes, I've said that to you multiple times.
Okay, thank you very much, Tony. That sounds great.
Mr. Chair, can I point out something? Nothing, nothing will be decided on September eighth. That's not, I'm sorry, September fifteenth. That's not a major date. It's just one of a long line of dates. Nothing will change with this RNAV for at least a year in terms of the approach. So December fifteenth date is not some sort of pivot point. It's just one step in the big picture. That's all it is.
Yeah, but it's already happening now. They're landing planes over my house right now.
Does not necessarily, that mean that's the RNAV. They can fly VFR over anywhere. That doesn't mean it's the RNAV. RNAV is a very specific route. Okay, yes, you can have Cape Air fly right over Little Nahat. That has nothing to do with the RNAV. I think you're mixing apples and oranges only because you don't realize the difference between the two, which is perfectly understandable. But they're not flying that dogleg RNAV currently.
So what's, what's the RNAV gonna do that, 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 that's gonna change what they're doing right now is fly now all of a sudden, this within the last, I want to say, since I've heard about this new runway change, maybe six to eight months, all of a sudden, because I can see this looking over Long Beach, that these planes now on, on approach to runway twenty-two left, that they are now flying the same flight track that runway four right uses on departure in which is flying either on the northern edge of Little Nahat or flying over Little Nahat.
That does not mean it's the RNAV. They could be flying the visual approach. It does, it doesn't mean it's the RNAV.
Gonna do that, it's gonna change that.
If they fly the RNAV as they want to change, it will come over the causeway on a very specific route. It won't come over Little Nahat. Now, then it's not the RNAV. It's something else. And they're not flying that RNAV anyway.
Well, a- again, um, I don't trust Massport. I don't trust the noise abatement office. Again, because I'm living the hell over here with the planes flying over my house. And when I have the manager of the Massport Noise Abatement Office telling me that I can't judge where planes are. And when I make reports that planes are flying over my house and they're telling me they're flying three-quarters of a mile away, nine-tenths of a mile away, a half a mile away. I get no satisfaction.
George, not to belabor this, but I have to agree with you because I'm sitting over here on the opposite shore and I'm watching them go over Little Nahat every night, all night. Now, I don't know what runway that takes them into, but all those arrivals now on the takeoffs, you're not alone because the northeast quadrant of Nahat, Big Nahat gets the same noise resonance that we, that you're getting in the nighttime.
Oh, yeah, that, well, that's a whole different ballgame. The nighttime planes that fly, that fly over my house all the time. And I'm not even, I'm not even bringing into the picture about that. You know, we have a, we have a, as you, as Tony had mentioned, that we don't want to put our noise in someone else's backyard. We overhear in Little Nahat and I, I guess from what you had said, uh, Mr. Canty, that you, uh, the northeast part of Big Nahat is, is getting it too. We have enough noise over here. We don't need any more noise. So again, putting these planes where they, the RNAV says they're gonna put them, it, 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 it is, it's just not, not plausible. Because these airplanes are gonna fly wherever they want, basically. And it, and if, if, if they can make a turn shorter to save some fuel, they're going to. They don't care about us over here in Little Nahat.
You have to understand that the reason we're talking about this now is because everybody's interested in doing something about it.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll have to, uh, we'll, we'll get that letter put together, George, and, um, and, and, and we'll fight for you. Uh, but, uh, we have to move on. Um, we got an executive session.
Mr. Chairman, let me comment one thing, um. I think people are not listening to Town Council, who happens also to be a pilot and knows this very well. They are not currently flying, um, the, the planes, George and Gene, that are going over Little Nahat are going over the, um, Coast Guard Station in that area closer to the heart and not flying the RNAV's, um, system at this point. That's what we're talking about. If they were flying that system, they wouldn't be flying over Nahat, a little Nahat or Big Nahat. Is that correct there?
Yeah, it's absolutely right.
When I talk, when I talk to the people over at the, um, noise abatement system, they're telling me that the RNAV system is what's putting these planes there. So I don't, I don't understand. I'm getting misinformation from somebody. I don't know who, but they're telling me the RNAV system is already in place.
Oh, see, I, I'm not aware of that, George.
I've been living this for thirty years, Mark, and so I know all the ins and outs about all this.
I'm not denying, I'm not denying that the planes aren't flying over Little Nahat. I see them, George. I agree with you. But they're not playing the, uh, they're, from what I hear from Town Council, they're not flying RNAV.
They're not flying the, the proposed recommendation for the changing. Comes straight in. That RNAV comes straight in.
The, the planes that are flying over Little Nahat, which they are, which it does occur, are flying off the current propos-, uh, the current established approach route for that. They are not, and that is because the current technology that they use doesn't, I guess RNAV will allow them to stick to the designed route, oh, closer than the current technology that they use. So the variable that is occurring now that's going over Little Nahat, um, won't happen under RNAV. However, with RNAV, they are, as they do every decade or so, they are explore, exploring an alternative approach route that would put the planes over the causeway. Now, what our effort is going to be is that any route over the causeway is far, is as north as possible that the negative impacts from that route don't impact Little Nahat or Big Nahat. And that's where our push is gonna be. Um, I know Michelle Capano's on the line too and had a, had a couple of comments.
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. Um, so I've been following this since April, May, when I got engaged on, on it. And, um, Dan is correct. However, I would be careful in terms of the support that you want to get from other residents. This is a town issue. It's not, and we know Little Nahat has been significantly impacted for decades. But I've lived in Big Nahat and I've heard those air, those planes fly over, um, and it's disruptive. And it's been at different times of the day. I've been working from home for over eighteen months. And I've heard them more frequently now and I think it's because of, I'm home more often and I hear them. I would just be cautious in terms of, um, the support that you need for this if you want all residents to be engaged. Because if you pull the data for the complaints from Massport, it's communities like Arlington, Medford, Everett, Winchester, their volume of complaints exceeds Nahat. And you need to really look at that data because that's what they're gonna go on. And I would encourage every resident, if they're disturbed by the airplane noise, they need to call it in. Because they're gonna look at that data and our data doesn't compare nearly as much as Lynn or Swan Scott. And it's unfortunate because we are in the direct path of it. And so as we prepare for this upcoming meeting in middle of September and residents want to participate or have a voice, you better make sure that you're prepared for it. Um, and, you know, I believe the board of selectmen, they're one hundred percent behind this. Um, but we need to make sure we're organized and I think they'll get us there.
Well stated.
Yes, I agree.
George, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, uh, well stated. Thank you very much. Uh, and I was wondering, I've asked this before, can we get this on the Nahat channel? That if you're bothered by the airplane noise, to call a certain number, because I don't think a lot of people know that. Because on the old website, it's been very hard to find the number to call for noise complaints.
Yes, we can do that.
I'd appreciate it. I mean, that would, that would, you know, make people aware that they can call a number and just sit, sit near, you know, exasperated, have to keep up tuning up their TV up and down. Or when you're trying to talk to someone, you, you, you have to stop talking because you can't hear because the airplane's going by. And again, I'm sorry that I'm such an excitable boy. I don't mean to point fingers at anybody because you guys are doing a great job and I don't mean to say you're not. It's just that I'm in this living hell over here. I'm privy to all the stuff that's going on here. And I think I'm a little more in tune to this than you guys are. I don't need all the data. I don't need all that stuff because I'm living this. I can see where the planes are turning, when they're not. And when you call the complaint, I get no satisfaction. So it, to deal with Massport and all the other people, um, it seems like you, 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 you're spitting in the wind. So it gets a little, a little.
Agree. I completely agree with you and it's unacceptable, the responses that our residents have gotten from that call line. It's not just you. I've heard it from others too.
Well, I, I hope, well, I, I guess like, um, Ms. Capano said, I have looked at the, at the data of, of the noise complaints via the towns and so on and so forth and, uh, everything started ramping up about two years ago with all these towns and so on and so forth about the, uh, amount of complaints. And you look at the complaints and, uh, over in Medford and, and, and the other areas and the, and the three thousand calls made by eight people on the, for three thousand calls. So they did, they're doing something over there right by making all these calls. I mean, I've made fifty calls in one day sometimes to the, the, the airport. And then you go online to see if they're there and they're not there. So I, I, again, I, my, my lack of trust for Massport and the noise abatement is absolutely zero. It, 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 it's absurd and, and, and they don't seem to want to do anything. I don't call them because I have nothing better to do. Unfortunately, I'm home most of the time, so I, I get the brunt of the, of the noise all the time. And most people at home at five-thirty in the morning, it, it just, you, you, you seem like you're.
That's where, that's why, that's where you hear me say, you know, we understand what the other communities are trying to accomplish. Because you have, you have to address that when you're talking with Massport regarding the future studies. Because they have, they are outnumbering us in, you know, political representation and calls into that number just because they're bigger communities, um, than we are. So you have to address it and you have to be, you have to understand that, you know, what they're trying to accomplish for those, um, environmental justice communities. So you have to address it, but that doesn't mean that you are, um, you know, being weak on your position, that you don't want to, uh, negative impacts on the heart. We have to be strong on that. We have to push hard on that because if it, if it, if it occurs, it'll be very hard to undo in the future.
I, I, I agree with that. And also one other thing, and, uh, and I'll let, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up. Um, these planes that these other people are complaining about, I have to imagine they're a lot higher up in the altitude than the planes that we're complaining about because we are so close to the airport when they're taking off, when they're arriving, just like Mr. Swift said, that when they're arriving towards the airport, they're a lot closer to the ground. Thus, the noise is a lot closer to the ground over in Milton and, 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 and Somerville and Medford and all the other places. These planes are nowhere near as close to the ground as we are. And again, I appreciate all the work that you people have done. I would like you to keep me in the loop so I can do my part to help out my part of the town and all of, all of the heart. Uh, Little Nahat is, is bearing most of the brunt. But thanks to Mr. Canty letting me know that, uh, the northeast quadrant of Big Nahat is also, uh, affected by this. Then fine, I, I will, um, do my best to get some, uh, signatures from over there also. Um, I, I think as a town, we should be in together and, and, and try to stop all this because it's, it's, it's nerve wracking. It, it, it's, I, I can hear a plane coming and I can feel my body physically changing from the plane knowing that it's coming, or I can hear it almost coming around the tides and coming up along Wilson Road. And I can feel my body physically changing and it's not healthy. So with that, I thank you very much. And again, I apologize for all my hand waving and my voice going up and down, but I'm just so passionate about this town. I love this town to death. Like I told you, I've been here fifty-eight years. And I, 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 I just want to do anything I can to help the people of this town and also myself too included, but also the people of the town. I love this town dearly. And if I didn't, I wouldn't be here for fifty-eight years. Thank you again, guys. And I look forward to being in contact with you to, to help out with any way I can.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George. Anything else in the chat, Tony?
Um, Suzanne Macarelli.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that Flight Radar twenty-four is completely inaccurate. So anyone in Big Nahat who looks at that app and thinks that those planes are going over the causeway, I would ask that you actually just come to Little Nahat and watch them go over our heads. We look at the bellies of the planes going over our heads, right? It, it almost follows Burpee Road to a T every Sunday morning, one after the other. And when I go on that app, it shows it going over the middle of the causeway. So I think that anyone who is using that, um, and thinks they understand what's going on, they don't.
Agree. Definitely agree.
Uh, I know that they also just recently, they were doing some work on, down at the Life Saving Station. It looked like maybe with the sound, um, you know, sensor that they have in that corner of the property there. Um, so we're gonna try, we're gonna make a push to get a copy of that information, that data.
It, it would be nice if you could get them to move that over to Little Nahat where it belongs.
Yeah, thank you, George. I mentioned that long ago when, when there was a task force formed that if they put that microphone in Little Nahat, they actually would get accurate readings. That it's about as far away from the air traffic as you can get by putting, I've never, I mean, I've never seen a plane go over Short Beach. They just go over Little Nahat. I don't know why that would, yeah, factor into our, our experience here in Little Nahat.
Right, ex- exactly. I, I've asked that in a couple of my complaints. Because I've had it done once before that they have a, a mobile noise monitor. And I've asked them in the recent complaints now, um, to put the noise monitor in my backyard. And maybe from the decibel levels, they could realize that these planes aren't flying where the, um, the Mass Point Noise Abatement Office keeps telling us and showing us with, with their, with their arrows that they're flying over the halfway house. And you know, Sue, and I know that they're not.
Right. Yeah. So if they put a, if the, if, you know, if the town affixed a camera on Burpee Road and just pointed it up, you would catch forty, forty planes a week at least. On video.
Yep.
Which I think would be more, um, I, I think that would go long, a, a long way rather than just the sound. I mean, yes, the sound is awful, but I mean, when you can, like, you know, read the writing on the bottom of the plane, it's so close. And these aren't small planes. I'm not talking about Cape Air. These are, these are huge planes, taking off and landing.
Yes, they're, they're huge planes. They're full, full wide-body planes.
All right, um, well, we will push to, uh, notify people as much as possible about the meeting that's coming up because I think that you should all join that and testify um, the experiences that you're having. And we'll also try to get, you know, like I said, we'll try to make it as easy as possible to get people to sign on to the petition uh, leading up to that meeting. Um, I don't have anything else in the chat, so if anyone else on the call has any comments, just unmute yourself and. I don't have anything else in the chat, so if anyone else on the call has any comments, just unmute yourself and announce your name and address.
Okay. All right. I guess that's it for Citizens Forum. We are gonna join into executive session. I'll make a motion. I moved the board of selectmen vote to adjourn to executive session pursuant to general law chapter thirty-eight, paragraph twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Northeastern University Marine Science Center, four thirty in the hot road in the hot. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And the chair does declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the position of the negotiating body. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Jane Canty, I.
Mark Cullen and I.
Josh Andrew, my, we will not be returning to open session. So good night, everyone.
We stay on this link, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Maybe take a couple minute break here.
Yeah.